Community forum. And we are, we just hit the record so that we can have this recorded. So tonight's candidate forum is going to be split into two parts. We're going to start with the candidates from the Flemington Raritan Board of Education that are running for the Board of Education. And that will go from now until eight fifteen and then we will meet with candidates from the Hundred and Central Board of Education. So I thought it was a good way to split. We had a lot of candidates coming in, so we tried to figure out the best way to do it. So welcome to everyone. My name is Kitty Ward and I am tonight's moderator. And this is a slide that shows our officers in the club for this year. Our president is Kent Davis, vice president is Raina Philippiak. Mary Ann Rumpula is treasurer, John McKay is our recording secretary, and Lois Zarish is our corresponding secretary. A lot of them are here, but I can't see the whole grid because I'm sharing my screen. So, but we all would like to welcome you to our event. And if you would like to learn more information about our club and all the fun things that we do, you can visit our website at rtdems.com and learn more about us there. So I just want to sort of do roll call though for the candidates. Lillian, I believe you're on. I saw your your name up there. Are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can. And how about Gina? Can, can, are you with us?
Yes.
Excellent. And Melanie?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful. And Chris Smoke, are you with us?
I don't see Chris.
Okay. Melanie, do you know, did you know if Chris was joining or?
Um, I thought he was joining. We just got our information yesterday.
Okay. All right.
With you.
So Mary Ann, you'll watch the room for us. Okay, so I'll go over our forum courtesies, just to give you an overview of what will be happening tonight. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement and
I'm sorry, I muted everybody, so you're gonna have to mute yourself.
There we go. Okay, which part? So, um, two minutes for opening. And two minutes for each question and one and a half minutes for a closing statement. And we have a timer. And the timer will, I'll start with each thing and then it makes sort of a semi-soft sound at the end, just to give you, let you know when your time is up. It sounds like that. Um, speaking order for the candidates will be in alphabetical order by last name. And then I'll rotate who goes first with each group of questions. I do ask that everyone keeps their microphone muted unless it is your turn to speak or answer a question. The session will be recorded for club members and posted to our website and social media page. And questions were selected and the categories and question top topics. I'm sorry, the questions came from our community and categories and question topics were provided to the candidates. Not the exact questions, but pretty close. And once again, we kindly ask the audience to keep their microphones muted at all times. This forum is not a question and answer session. We will ask the candidates at the end for information on how you may contact them should you have any questions that did not get covered tonight. So with that, I thank you for your consideration and respect and let's begin. So the candidates that are with us tonight is Lillian Culpas, Gina Crisitello. Hopefully I said that right. She can correct me. Did I say that correctly, Gina?
Gina Crisitello, you did good.
Crisitello, okay. Melanie Rosengarden and Chris Smoke. Okay, and so we are going to start with opening statements. And in your opening statement, if you can tell us a little bit about yourself and include things like how long you've lived in Raritan Township, do you currently have children or grandchildren in the district? Why are you interested in serving on the board? Maybe some challenges in education overall and concerns that you have specific to our district. And just an idea of your experience or knowledge of the district's current curriculum and whether that had an impact on your decision to run for the board. So it's a lot in two minutes, so, but hopefully you can give us a little glimpse. So Lillian, we're gonna start with you and whenever you're ready, I will begin the timer.
If you can hear me, I'm ready.
I can hear you. That's great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Ward, and thank you to the Raritan Township Democratic Club for hosting this forum and asking all candidates to participate. My name is Lillian Culpas. My family and I have lived in Raritan Township since 2014. I have two children in the school district. I am running for school board because I see there is a need to provide a voice for taxpayers and parents who want to have a say in their children's education. Some areas I see are of immediate concern in our district are staffing shortages. And we have seen the most impact in transportation with the bus driver shortages that actually many districts are dealing with. I think another concern is staffing and retaining qualified and talented teachers and staff. I think teacher support and motivation is vital for our district and that includes listening to what impacts their classroom and how they can better serve our students. Further, as our district, we need to work on supplemental programs to provide resources for the children that have fallen behind in their academics due to the pandemic lockdowns. So I see there are many different issues that are wide issues for our district that I believe I can help. I believe I can be a great asset to the board and I thank you again for having me available here today.
Thank you very much, Lillian, and welcome. Okay, and then we'll move on to Gina. Now, this is the part where technology sometimes messes me up, but we're gonna hope it works. Yes, I think it did. Okay, Gina. You are next. Would you like to introduce yourself and give us your opening statement?
Sure. My name is Gina Crisitello. I've been a Raritan Township resident for going on ten years now. I have three children ranging from the ages of three to eleven years old. One is in preschool, the other two at the current moment, we homeschool them. They were in Flemington Raritan School District up until the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Given the previous school year with the twenty, twenty, twenty-one, we just felt that the district was no longer providing the two key attributes we feel is important for child developmental growth, and that is consistency and community. So I got a educated, I'm sorry, a teacher and with that, we were able to put a learning path in place. So we got our consistency back. And for community, we went back to church. This was only supposed to be a one-year plan, but it just works really well for our family. So we're just gonna continue to do this. So why am I running for the school board if my children are no longer in this district is a question I know that many will have and I would like to address that now. I'm running for the frustrated parents who feel like that nobody is listening to them on the school board because I truly know how you feel. I'm running for the parents who feel stuck in this school board, or I'm sorry, in the public school system, who feel that private school or homeschool is not an option for them, given their schedule, finances, or patience will not allow them. I would like to work on strengthening the board's ties with communities. I believe our students are only as strong as our community is. I would like to put parents' voices and teachers', parents' voices and teachers' back into the school board's conversation and be part of creating a strong foundation for this generation and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, welcome to our board. Welcome to our forum, I should say. Thank you. Okay, and Melanie, oh, see, it keeps jumping ahead. All right, Melanie, when I say go, no, welcome, Melanie. Go ahead and get started.
Hi, thank you for having this opportunity tonight. My name is Melanie Rosengarden. My husband and I moved here nineteen years ago with our two children for the school district's reputation. I am a pediatric ICU nurse by trade and I turned into the school nurse career in two thousand. So I worked in a different district for three years prior to coming here. And I worked here for over seven, about seventeen years before I had to retire. We really liked the school system. We feel that it was very strong and it gave both of my children excellent outcomes. They're adults living out of the house and fully employed in their jobs. Some biggest challenges for our education is definitely the learning loss along with the mental health. We have to get these kids up. Staffing shortages, as Lillian had mentioned, is a huge problem and we do know that and we're working on it. But statistically, there's fifty percent less teachers going to school for education. So that's gonna make it very hard to fill some of these positions. I'm not running based on the curriculum, but I do choose, I did choose to move here because it was a strong curriculum in the past. And I know that the curriculum changes over the years and I understand that. But when I came into this board during COVID, everything was upheaval and I'm really looking to get not every day, but the situation that we have, that we have ahead and really supporting and really doing what a board needs to do. Yeah, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you. Okay, so we have a lot of topics and a lot of questions and not a whole lot of time. So I tried to mix things up as best I could. We're going to start back at the top with the questions now and then, and then I will rotate who goes first after the first question. So we are going to move on to talking about curriculum and Lily and I am gonna start with you. And the question I have for you is what do you view as the role of the Board of Education in selecting curriculum materials, including current and existing books and reference materials that the board has already approved or is pending approval?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I agree with the New Jersey SBA as to what the role of the Board of Education is in selecting curriculum materials. According to the New Jersey SBA, the board is supposed to select curriculum materials, is supposed to approve curriculum material and know what teachers are actually teaching our students. So I am absolutely in agreement with what the SBA is saying in selecting the curriculum materials, including books and reference materials for our students. I think it is our responsibility as a board to determine what is appropriate, age-appropriate for kids from the kindergarten classes up until the eighth grade classes and see what it is that they're learning and how are teachers teaching this, the curriculum that they, that we receive from the Department of Education. So our role is extremely vital, very extremely important in how we select materials. We need to be collaborative with each other as the board members. We need to collaborate with our community to see what it is that is appropriate. What are parents thinking? Because I think it's important, as I said in my opening statement. I'm here for a voice for those parents who feel that they need a voice in their children's education. And I think it's very vital that we know what it is that our kids are learning. And that's why I'm here, why I'm running for board. Thank you.
Thank you. As a follow-up to that, do you, I know across the, across the state and even in the nation, there is a tremendous focus on schools that are banning books based on whatever criteria that particular school district is determining. How do you, how do you feel about book banning? And as a board member, how do you, how do you make that determination of, of what you think is appropriate as compared to an educator whose background has taught them to select materials based on what is appropriate? How do you, how do you balance that as a board member? How do you think you would?
Well, I guess it's a two-part question, right? First, a book banning question. I think we need to see what, what do we mean by book banning? Because if we're talking about banning books, the classics, do we really want to do that? What are we banning? What are we talking about that we don't want children to read? Do we not want them to read about sexual activity? I certainly don't. So when it comes to book banning, what is it that the word really means and what are the books that are being discussed? So I think when it comes to those kinds of, those kinds of topics, we need to see what are the books that we're talking about? How does the community feel about those books and what are they teaching our children? Are they appropriate? Are they age-appropriate? We have, as a member of the board, we have responsibility for the very, very youngest of our community, to the eighth graders who are just about to enter high school. So how do we choose between the eighth grade books, right, versus the kindergarten books? It's, it's an extremely vital question and I think we work together, like I said earlier, we work together with the community. And then for something that we as a board, oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
At the timer.
Yeah, I know, I know. And I'm, I'm not good at interrupting, but thank you so much. Thank you. That was very thorough. Um, okay, we will move on to Gina and still along the curriculum area, Gina. What do you feel is a more critical subject matter? Post-pandemic learning loss, which I think you've already spoken to a bit. Or the New Jersey Health Education standards that, that are, are, have gone into effect?
That's an easy question. I would, I have to say, the learning loss, how are we gonna have them retain any new information if they don't even caught up to what they need to know? Easy.
So what, how would you address that? So if that's
That, I mean, that, I would have to, you know, work with the board members, figure out what they're doing. But I think what we should do is, you know, do a little bit more of some peer leadership groups. We really need to kind of break them down into smaller groups to figure out which children are behind, where they are behind, and address those issues, even if it is, you know, in-school peer leadership programs where they're being taken out of school, I mean, I'm sorry, taken out of school, taken out of class to be focused on where they are so they can be brought up.
So ta, so taking students out of a class, one class to get caught up in another?
Yes, well, because if they're already in English and they're already far behind, anything that you're trying to give them new to retain, they're gonna be lost as it is because they're missing so much. So it's kind of like a losing battle there. So we need to get them caught up.
All right. Thank you. Um, now we're moving on to Melanie and if, we haven't seen Chris, right? He's, he must have had something come up. So if Chris is on, just give a yell, Chris. So you can have some fun with us too. Okay, Melanie?
Yes.
I am going to sort of circle back to the question that was asked earlier. What do you view as the role of the Board of Education in selecting curriculum materials? Including current existing books and reference materials?
Well, I believe that these, as Lillian said, we are part of the process. But we hire very highly educated teachers and administration to look at this and oversee our teachers as they're working through the curriculum. When we select curriculum, it's not just somebody is picking something out. They do research. They have committee groups. Those committee groups are part of teachers and input and administrators and such. And then typically pilot a couple of programs and the teachers are usually very excited about this process. And it's very important, but as a board member, we're looking over, we're asking questions, we're making sure that it is age-appropriate and that it's going to be able to sustain the time, the time period that they need to with the children and making sure that in the broad scheme of things, we're not jumping over their heads. We really need to keep it comfortable for them. But as a board member, it's really asking questions and supporting our administration and reviewing stuff so that we can make sure that we're giving the most. And public input is very important. I understand. I am a parent of two children and very vastly different children. One loved school, one really didn't wanna go. So I've had both extremes and I have to say that, you know, sometimes it's really hard and some children are ready for some things and some aren't. So those are all things that our educators, that we rely on them for this information as well. I am not a teacher and I won't take that role, but I will use their suggestions and look through it to make sure that it is strong, current, effective, financially responsible, and the best we can do for our district.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to start with Gina and we'll go away from curriculum a little bit and talk about diversity and equity and inclusion. And Mary Ann, there's somebody in the waiting room. Do you see that or? It just popped up on my thing, sorry.
I think everybody's in, kidding.
Okay, thank you. So Gina, the, what improvements do you believe can be made in developing a school culture that includes an understanding of all students regardless of their or their family's background?
So we're a really big school district. There are walks of every life in this district and everybody needs to be respected and everybody needs to be heard. I think the one thing that I still don't understand about living in 2022 is why are we keeping statistics of black student, white student, Hispanic student? When they walk through those doors, they're one person, a student. The fact that we're putting any kind of label on them just seems backwards to me and it makes it hard to understand. Like, that's the one thing that they all have in common. When they walk through that door, we are all a student. We are all here to learn. So, and then of course, besides that, we need to preach respect and love.
Okay, I guess as a follow-up to that, the, the the reason I believe that statistics are still held is because statistics show us that marginalized groups continue to struggle, whether it's through poverty, whether it's through racism. You know, it is, they continue to struggle. So if we don't highlight it, they, then, then things don't change for those people, I guess.
I, I mean, I, I, you could be a hundred percent right, but I guess we've never done it, so we don't know. And sometimes we, I feel like as a society, we try to look for problems. And, you know, if we just remember, just remove some labels and let kids be kids or really students and don't make them say that, oh, because you're from here, this is what's gonna happen. You're kind of defeating them before they even start.
Okay, all right. Great. Did you have anything else you'd like to add to that?
No.
Okay. Um, and Melanie? You know, the hardest part of this is the managing the Google slide. Melanie, a similar-based question, but food, shelter insecurity, depression, anxiety, and suicidal thoughts have increased post-pandemic. I think you have all touched on that. What areas of improvement would you like to see the district make in addressing mental health needs, educational disparity among marginalized groups and overall gaps in learning? And how would you fund it is the big question.
That is the most important question, unfortunately, how, how to fund it. However, areas that I would like to see improved would definitely be just building that culture. I think we really need to bring our kids together. After the pandemics, people were so isolated that they have a hard time working and respecting with each other. And I think the more we get the kids together, we can actually build upon that. The district does have ESS working with them and they are mental health professionals. And they do help certain children that are having extreme difficulty getting to school and learning. Basic needs coming to school are so important because if a child doesn't come in with a good night's sleep or having been fed breakfast, they don't learn as well and we all know that. So we do have different programs in the district to support that. And you're right, I would love to say every kid, you can just come into school and be a kid. And I really think that is very improvement and important. But we still have to support those kids when they do have needs, when they're not doing as well. So it doesn't matter if you come from a high economic or a low economic, we have to support each one for what they need. The other thing would be, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. Letting children play and be children. I know that seems so simple, but we are constantly pushing them and pushing them to go harder and faster and smarter and better that, you know, things that we were taught in middle school is being taught in elementary now. Like, it just seems to be pushing a lot of stuff down. And it's not that I don't want the children to be smart and educated and bring, come up. It just puts a lot of pressure on them, which increases their anxiety and depression sometimes because they're just not mentally ready for it as well. But the district is working hard on the food and shelter insecurity. We do have people that are in charge of it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Melanie. And then, Lillian, I will go back to the question we had prior, if you wanted to touch on that of any improvements that you think can be made in developing a school culture and understanding students, all students regardless of their backgrounds or their families' backgrounds?
Waiting for the timer to start.
Oh, okay. I was waiting. You just started talking. There we go. Go ahead.
I think, I think it's vital that the schools foster a culture of kindness and respect for all students. Currently, the schools have kindness weeks. And I have seen teachers focus on different ways kids can be bucket fillers, which is a way to show kindness to others. Children are taught to make smart decisions when it comes to respecting their peers and also their adults. And actually, if you go to pretty much any school in the district, you will see countless posters about being brave and being kind and being loving and being accepted. So I do think that this idea of tolerance is very much embedded in our school culture. Many classes even have kindness as a rule, which I think is really great. Now, one thing we must keep in mind is that the lockdowns and virtual learning created a very serious problem with our children and that problem was that loss of social interaction for such an incredibly long time. And many parents that I've talked to have seen this with their kids who were once very sociable, happy kids are struggling to make friends or struggling or fighting or, there's a lot of physical interaction. So I think it's very important for kids to remain in in-person instruction because of this particular loss. And that increased conflict with kids is something that to be, need to be very mindful and, and I hope that this doesn't happen again. But I think as a board, it's something that we wanna keep, keep in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now we are up to Melanie and we are going to jump into community and staffing, which also was touched on earlier. So how would you address or how are you addressing? I'm not sure which, right? The shortage of bus drivers and bus monitors, I know that is an issue. And what concerns do you have for retaining and recruiting quality staff as we are facing a nationwide teacher shortage?
All right, so during, during the pandemic, we know that the bus drivers were furloughed. When we came back, we had a big shortage of bus drivers. And it's the basic necessity to get these children to school. We don't live and walk in And it's the basic necessity to get these children to school. We don't live in a walking community as beautiful as it is here. We work with joint transportation from the high school and because of that, they came to the table with a an idea and proposal so that we could retain current bus drivers. And they were given some incentives and also to get game new drivers. At this point, I believe we have fifty drivers that work for a hundred in central. So we're doing much better with that. And but the bus monitors have been a big issue lately. And they have converted some people recently have offered from the health and hygiene team to become a bus monitor. But it's still, it's definitely an issue. It's just, it's getting the word out. For recruiting and retaining quality staff, we have a great staff. The teacher shortage is well known, but we just negotiated a strong five-year contract with the teachers. We're working hard to be competitive because we were not competitive to close area schools and we lost teachers to that. We advertise in local papers, indeed, local colleges. We work with colleges to send information that, you know, we're looking for people and they also do their internships with us. We're advertising on NJ Spot along with other online sites. And we're always looking for ways to attract those new teachers. But if fifty percent of the colleges are not filling up with teachers that want to be teachers, therein lies the biggest problem. We need to get them into college in order to come to work for us so that we have a great staff to keep. The answer, I'm not really sure. I really wish I had an answer for that.
Great, thank you. Okay, I am now going to move on to Lillian and same question, Lillian. How would you, if you have any ideas for addressing the busing issue shortages? But more importantly, what concerns do you have and what ideas do you have to facilitate teacher shortage?
Yeah, so this is a very serious issue, as I mentioned in my opening statement. You know, we have seen numerous emails from the superintendent and our school principal that they're in need of teaching assistance as well as other staff. I think we can address this by providing a competitive salary and certainly motivation for teachers to come work for our school district. One thing I think we should do is to be able to recruit fairly from a variety of sources and determine if those sources are working for us. And then once we find applicants, we need to apply the proper metrics to ensure these applicants are qualified. So we should focus on experience, we should focus on the applicant's education and to see what kind of value they add to the classroom. It is vital, excuse me. So teachers have faced many challenges to the school year. But we all know how stressful it was for them during the lockdown and virtual learning. So now is very much the time we need to focus on teacher retention because we don't need any more disruption to our children's education. So not only is teacher retention crucial, but of course recruiting new and qualified teachers. And as far as the shortage of bus drivers and this, for what I'm talking about, it really goes to the shortage of bus drivers. We should, salary and benefits should be fair across the board. What are our teachers earning? What are our support staff earning? Where are our bus drivers earning? We should understand this and maybe see what similar districts compared to ours, what are they paying their staff? How are they determining what works for them? And then let's see if that works for us. How can we make sure we motivate our teachers and our aides enough for them to stay? And then to, not just to stay, but to apply to our school district. And I, and I see it every day, amazing. We have amazing teachers. And I want a lot of them to stay because they're excellent and they're wonderful and they care for kids. We had a great bus driver last year. He's, he's gone now. And unfortunately, you know, it happens, but I hope these, this is, this is the plan that I would have. Thank you. I see the timer running down.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you. And I'll offer the same question to you, Gina.
To address the monitors, I would probably the bus monitors. I went in for, as an easy solution right now, I would think I would look to our students right now for the upperclassmen in the, in the buses right now, just to get them more involved in the community and the district and everything. I think it would give them a little bit more responsibility. Help them with feeling confident because they have now a role that's important and that is keeping the kids on the bus safe and in their seats, how they should. So that's what I would do for the monitors. As for the teacher national shortage, I mean, the teachers have, the teachers have been taken advantage of, I believe. And I feel like COVID was the straw that broke the camel's back. I'm a big advocate for teachers. As a person with dyslexia, I know the profound effect a great teacher can have on you. It's life changing. I think our governor is in, right in removing the EDTPA requirement and which has only been a requirement since 2014. To think that a school district today could possibly have missed out on someone like my great Miss Becker because she couldn't afford that test or anything breaks my heart. So I think we're moving in the right direction that way. What we can do locally, I mean, I think we just need to bring, bring back morale into it. Like we are a little bit of a broken community right now, I feel. And we need to strengthen that up, you know, with brainstorming ideas, but we do need to bring morale back into this community. So our students will mirror it and educators will be begging to join it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I think yes, I've lost track now of who goes next, but I think it's Lillian. So this would be our final question for tonight and it has to do with with fiscal, fiscal responsibility. And let's make it, okay. So all of those things that, that you all did mention about attracting and retaining our staff and, and having a five-year contract is a is a huge benefit to the staff for right now. But when you talk about some of those other things with the buses and the bus monitors, it, it always comes back to the, the dollar. And school taxes, as we all know, make up the largest amount of our property taxes. So how would you propose to trim the budget to allow for those things? Is there any, anything within the budget that you see that could provide a savings to the board? And allow you to do some of those things. So I'll start with Lillian first.
Thank you. Well, I think it's important to review the budget that the district manages and analyze it, not only to see the, the big picture, but also see that the very small parts that contribute to that big picture. So that way we understand what are our biggest expenditures, why is it so large and how, and how is it working for us? Who are vendors and why are they chosen? And to be able, and how to be trimmed that school budget? That's a really, really tough question. And you work in collaboration with the board, your board members to see what, what is the cost saving ideas? So I think once we review the budget, how about looking into energy? How energy efficient are our schools? We should track energy usage and see where it spikes up. Where can we make adjustments as necessary to be able to trim those costs down? How can we manage our facilities better to be able to lower costs? What are the contrasts that the district currently has? And maybe reassess those contrasts on a yearly basis or maybe, maybe on a quarterly basis and determine whether these vendors are still a good fit. I mean, are there, do we have some vendors that have been around for ten, fifteen years? And if so, why? Do they continue to serve the needs of our schools? And, and I'm sure there's many of them, but we, if you have to make the hard decisions, let's, let's make those hard decisions. Also, we should make the most of our schools when they're empty. Now, I know we have sports programs, but we can potentially generate funds by providing these empty schools to groups like the, like the scouts, maybe evening classes for adults, maybe business meetings and bring those funds in. And what about our parking lots? We have huge parking lots. And these can be something that we can utilize for local events and maybe charge a small fee. So there's several different areas that I would tackle initially as a going to the board. And then I would want to ask my board members, what do you think about these ideas? Have you done them before? And what has worked, what has, so that's what I would, that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina, same question.
Well, I agree with everything what my running mate said. That's why she is my running mate. But I would say that we would definitely go over the, the budget a little bit more. I mean, I was going through last night and I was just seeing a couple of things that I just, you know, I don't know that much about it, but it did make me just are we overspending? Is there certain things? A lot of consultants. We have a lot of consultants on here, you know, we, you know, we're paying a educator consultant and I mean, I think we can get that from our teachers. Like that's about bringing the teachers' voices into the board room. So we don't have to pay an educator and consultant because they should be our educating consultant considering they are in the room with our, our students, our children. Besides that, yeah, I mean, everybody's cutting back right now with prices going up through the roof, we need to pull back. So we really need to go with a fine tooth to comb through this budget. Everything isn't necessary. Do we need to be paying this out? Is there some places that we can, can we get a cheaper cleaning company? I mean, that the cleaning company is, is pretty expensive. I mean, there's a lot of things that we could go through and I think that we can negotiate and talk to, especially we've been a customer of them for so many years. I think they should be hopefully be able to work with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Melanie.
Okay, I have to agree with both of the women before me, first of all. However, the, as the board vendors, they're typically state approved and we have to go through state I think we should be able to have
Melanie, your internet seems a little Scotty. Do you want to start again?
Sure, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was.
You're freezing up on us.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so so going back to vendors, we are required by the state to use certain vendors. Otherwise, we have to get three rent out our facilities. YMCA uses it, the basketball uses it. Lacrosse, there's, there's a lot of things that we are using trying to build our income. We are a nonprofit, but we are trying to use it to subsidize our stuff. We do semi reimbursements with our special ed children. Me X amount of dollars and I would have to spend it or quote unquote, you lose it, right? So they went to a zero-based budget and it was a very difficult thing to do. But you're given zero dollars and you have to really go through your stuff and figure out what you actually need for that year. And it has changed things. We don't have closets full of stuff that certain teachers like to hoard. I mean, it's just a natural thing for them. They, you know, try to protect all their things for their children. And we must assess. We have been sitting in finance committees and asking these questions on how we can trim and stuff like that. And unfortunately, teacher salaries are the biggest component of it. The other piece I wanted to say is that we did just bring back our TAs, which were pulled out a few years ago. Brought them back in for a twofold. It saved us several hundred thousand dollars. And it also is giving them the security that they're back with us. They want to be with us and that's really important. And some of them have teaching degrees and hopefully we can convert them into teachers. And some of them are going back to school. They do this while they're in school. So we're trying to like home grow our own group. Other possible savings is solar power. We've been looking into, especially after the HVAC installation on the six schools. That's another thing that I'm looking at, you know, trying to get that to bring us money into our thing. Thank you.
Oops. Thank you very much. So we are out of time for this portion. We are going to now move to the closing statements. And Gina, I will start with you. And if there was anything that you didn't get a chance to say that you'd like to say now would be a good thing or anything you want to leave with us. And then let us know, let the audience know how they can get in touch with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kitty, so much for putting this together. In closing, I just want to point out the great opportunity our district does have at this moment in time. And that is of community engagement and cooperation. There is currently a huge research of interest in our education system among our community. I see this as a great opportunity to bring parents, board members, educators and the community at large to work together. So we can bring excitement and morale back to this community. This way, our students will mirror it and educators will be begging to join it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will move to Melanie. Anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you very much for this opportunity. As you all know, I'm rerunning. I really would like a second term because I feel there's so much more to be done. I don't feel like I got a full glimpse. And the parents, there's nothing more horrible than to hear these parents struggle so much. You know, it was tough for every single person and I'm sorry for that. But I really want to give back. I'm vested in our district from the beginning. I've been in the district and I know inside and outside. And our strategic plan is coming, like Gina said, and please join us because it is a great way to bring back morale. And I totally agree. We just need to get out of that COVID zone and come back to a community with lots of functions and not seeing empty seats just for board meetings. You know, I would just love to see people in the seats and support us. It's lonely there. And I really do think that back to school nights and all those different activity nights, I wish we can just get more and more people to come to each one of them. The taco lattes have been fantastic. It's a great way to talk back and forth that you don't get to do at a board meeting. And it's so much easier. We can't respond and I hate that, but it's the rules. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, ladies. I appreciate your time and Lillian.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
You forgot about me.
Sorry. Okay, go right ahead, Lillian.
Well, I have to agree with Melanie. We want to see more parents and more taxpayers at the Board of Education meetings. And the taco lattes have been very, very informative. So I absolutely agree with that. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, I'm a mom of two children, so I have volunteered in the past at my children's schools, the school events. I've been a class mom. I have attended numerous Board of Education meetings over the past several years and I have admittedly, I have openly expressed my displeasure at some of the policies the board has approved. I have also participated in the Superintendent's Equity Ad Hoc Committee in the past year. As far as my education experience, I taught religious formation or CCD at my church for over six years. I have taught virtual second grade. I taught third grade and most recently over the past few years, I have, I have taught and I'm currently teaching fourth grade. So I can have a glimpse of what teachers have to do and the incredible job our teachers do for our district. And it's just a glimpse because I only do that once a week. I have been in the finance field for over twenty years as a compliance officer. And as a compliance officer, I interact with a variety of persons and it's important for me to be able to work together with my clients and even with those clients who I disagree and they don't like my advice and I don't like what they have to say to me. But we collaborate together to make sure we achieve what's best for us. So I think my background as a volunteer for the community and as a finance professional makes me a really great fit for the school board. As I will have to engage with many members of our community, I want to listen to their concerns. I want to answer their questions. And I want to make sure that the ultimate goal is for our childrens to be served well. So I look forward to working with the current board. I mean, I hope that we find mutual agreement. Actually, I know that we can find mutual agreement on issues that affect our district because I think most of us can agree that we want the best for our children. We want the best curriculum and the best education for them. So I urge the voters to vote for Corpus and Cristicello on November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies. And you're welcome to stay on and, and view the, the hundred and central portion. And thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty.
Thank you.
Kitty, can we give our face?
Kitty, can we give our Facebook address and our email to people who want to contact us?
If you send it to that email, I'll make sure it gets on the, on the information.
Great, thank you.
If you guys want to drop it into the chat, we'll have it.
I wasn't sure if the chat was, yeah, so you can put it in the chat. That would be great. Thank you. Okay, well, we're moving on to Hunterdon Central candidate. So I'm going to start with a roll call and see if those candidates have, have been able to join us. So is Ariel on the call?
I am. I'm here, Ms. Ward.
Welcome Ariel and Scott.
I'm here.
Hello, how are you?
Well, how are you?
And Robert, Rob?
Here I am.
Okay, so it is the three of you. And I'm going to attempt to go in order, but as you could see, I sometimes mess that up, but that's okay. So I will just review the foreign courtesies again in case you weren't on. Each candidate will be given two minutes for their opening statement and each question. And one and a half minutes for their closing statement, although it looked like my timer wasn't working that way, but close enough. Speaking order will be in alphabetical order for the questions and we'll rotate for each question. Please keep your microphone muted unless it is your turn to answer a question. And for everyone in the audience, this session will be recorded for club members and posted to our website and social media page. And questions were selected from the community and the categories and question topics were provided to the candidates ahead of time. And we kindly ask once again for the audience to keep your microphones muted at all times. You've all done an excellent job so far. And again, we'll ask the candidates at the end for their information. So we have Ariel Almora, Scott Nickel and Robert Richard. And so I'm going to start with the opening statement. If you can tell us a little bit about yourself, how long you've lived in Raritan Township? Do you currently have children or grandchildren in the district? Why are you interested in serving on the board? Two to three biggest challenges in education as you see it? Or areas of concern that are specific to our district? And sort of, did your experience or knowledge of the current curriculum. Impact your decision to run for the board or to rerun for the board, as it were. So I will start with Ariel.
Okay, so my name is Ariel Almora. I have lived in Raritan Township for almost two years. We're coming up on our anniversary. I live on Featherbed Lane and my wife and I, with our two children, my daughter Mia Bella, my son Giovanni, who attend Robert Hunter Elementary School. I have no grandchildren that I, that I'm aware of, so that's a good thing. Let's see, the reason why I'm interested in running for the Board of Education is because as a parent. I have become obsessed as of late with the trends affecting our communities, our state, our country as a whole. My background is pretty diverse. I was born in Havana, Cuba. I migrated to this country with my mother and my sister in 1983, I believe. I served seven years in the Marine Corps. I'm currently still employed with my law enforcement agency. I've been there for 17 years. I have an enormous amount of training when it comes to dealing with the youth and young adults. And I see what's happened as of late in our country, the past few years. And the radicalism that is trying to infect our communities. And I see it in trying to infect our school systems and that's why I became extremely passionate about taking this on. And, and trying to vow for a seat come November. Okay, so I think that a major concern of mine is the bias incidents. That have occurred over the few, the past few years and the lack of diversity, the lack of inclusion and the lack of equity in our schools. Also, one of the founding members and the current treasurer for the NWCP chapter here in Hunterdon County. I spoke at the Board of Ed meeting last Monday, I believe it was the 19th. And I spoke about these two hot topic points for me. And I think those are things that need to be addressed in our schools, along with the obvious, which is the staffing issues that we have. Not only in our community, in our state, in our country, which is amazing to me. And the resources, the lack of resources to keep these, these ideal people in place. And, and staying within our communities.
Thank you. You'll, you'll, we'll get into some more things. So you'll have time to. Scott, welcome. Tell us a little bit about you.
Thank you. My name is, first of all, I want to thank everybody from the Raritan Township Democratic Club for, for having us here. It's a great, great way to kind of give our thoughts and ideas and how we can go forward with the Board of Education. I've lived in Raritan Township 21 years. I've had three children go through Hunterdon Central. My daughter graduated in 2010. And I have two boys, one graduated in 13, one in 16. They are now all the way through college and creating their own successes in life, which is a good thing. I have always, I've always volunteered for things. I've been a soccer coach, baseball coach, scout, den leader. Marching band parent, running around on the field with props and different things like that. So I've always enjoyed volunteering and taking my time for that. You know, my, my now son-in-law was on the Board of Education, kind of convinced me to run based on things that, that he knows of me. I'm looking to rerun really because of the work that we're doing and we're trying to continue, Rob. You know, being on a board with me as well. And hopefully we get Ariel on there as well. So the three of us can go in there and do the work, continue the work that really is just starting with us. You know, there's kind of an entrenched worldview from a certain group of parents. Based on the way they were raised, the way their parents were raised, their parents before them, and it kind of still guides them in a certain way. And, you know, we, we don't want, there are people that want to run for these three seats. I want to change that. I kind of want to kick things back to the 60s and 70s. And kind of, kind of round off or tamp down on the, on the work we're doing with regard to equity, diversity and inclusion. I don't want to see that happen. You know, we have some big challenges, health, mental health issues, learning and socialization laws. We just want to continue with trying to do that work.
Great, thank you. And Rob?
Good evening, everyone. My wife Helen and I have been living in the Flemington Raritan area for 41 years now, just about. So, yeah, I'm old. Both of our daughters came through the Flemington Raritan system and then through the high school, graduating in 2001 and 2002 respectively. And we are very happy to announce that we are finally grandparents. Notably, the challenges facing public education today are pretty much the ones that are facing Hunterdon Central. It's, it's a phenomenon that's widespread. On my list, I would put school safety. We have a very wide open campus. It's very difficult for us to, 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 to control what's going on between buildings. So this is especially challenging for Hunterdon Central. Student social and emotional health is a big deal. COVID had a significant influence on kids and in education. And last year, our ninth and 10th graders had a real tough time adjusting to being in high school. There were more than the usual number of behavioral issues. And this is not just true at Hunterdon. It's, it's true everywhere. So we have our work cut out for us in helping these kids make the adjustment. The third point about challenges facing us is equity. I think Scott addressed that to a degree and so did Ariel. We have data to show that students of color are overrepresented in school discipline issues and underrepresented in academically advanced and enriched areas. So we really need to work on that as well. I have served on the Board Curriculum and Instruction Committee, now called the Student Life and Program Committee, since I first joined in 2017. I'm currently the chair. My professional expertise happens to be in curriculum instruction and assessment. So I'm, I really feel that I can make a big difference in, in helping our school move forward in those areas. My motivation to serve and to be reelected to the Board of Ed is the same motivation. That I tapped into to become a teacher in the first place. And that is, I want to continue to make a difference in the lives of young people. Thank you. Kitty, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are going to move into our first question. And I will start with Ariel. And it's about the community. And the question is. You may have seen there's a renewed effort across the United States and in the area to, towards seeking and recruiting candidates to serve on the boards. Was your decision to run for the board facilitated by any of these groups such as Arise New Jersey or Network for Public Education?
No, I don't even know what these groups are. It's the first I've ever even seen them or the name on your screen. So they, there, the, there's no influence from any of these groups to have me run for the Board of Education. As Rob alluded to and Scott, my passion lies with continuing the groundwork. That I've been privileged enough and humbled enough to have come across that they're, they've been doing. I think it's great work. I think the work that needs to be done is for the students. The students are our future. They are, and I know that sounds, you know, kind of mundane if you will, but it's the truth. And I've seen, I've been to a lot of different parts of this beautiful globe of ours and I've seen. Pretty much the worst in people and I've seen the best in people. And even now in my current profession, I see people usually 95% of the time at their worst. And I must say that when it affects me deeply when children are present or children witness. Different types of crimes or events that take place that could be detrimental to their mental health, let alone their growth process. And we see that now within our schools and we see it with the exclusion of certain groups. Or the thumb on top of the, of, of a person because of where they, where they're from or what they look like. Or whatever reason they want, someone wants to come up with. And I, I'm not a person of, of combative nature, if you will, when I want to open up a dialogue and have a collaborative conversation. And we could have differences. We could have differences of opinion on, on, on a bevy of topics. But the solution needs to be twofold and we need to make it for our children. They, they are the priority. The students are the future and we're failing them. We are even, as, and I say, we're failing them collaboratively, collaboratively. Not just one group.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and Scott, this next question is for you. And. It is again toward community. What, what would your approach be in working with the community? So that people from all perspectives feel safe and comfortable coming to and attending and participating in Board of Ed meetings?
Well, you know, the, the biggest thing is whenever I'm out and I'm talking to people and I tell them that I'm on the board. I tell them they should, they should come to a board meeting, anybody in the area. I mean, we, so many, so many times we've been in board meetings where, you know, there's a handful of people. Now, of course, we have some kind of hot button issues that come up and we fill a 300-seat little theater. So, and that's, that's always good too. It's great to see it. And we get some back and forth. We get some people feeling one way, people feeling another way. But, and I would, I would really like to see more of, we, we get a lot, in particular recently, we just have a lot of people. Not a lot, but we get this, this contingent, a small group of people that come, usually the same people. And they just kind of want to try to, try to break down the board members and, you know, we're not doing the right thing. We're, we're lemmings. Administration is doing something wrong and you guys just follow along and just rubber stamp. But we want people to know. We want people to come up and show, look, we're thoughtful people. You know, we just don't rubber stamp things. There's a process that, process that goes on. When you're on the board, there's so much information you get that the public just doesn't have any idea what it is. But I'd really like people to come, come, just even if you're neutral, just come by and see the process. Because it's the process that to me is exciting and that's why I like being on the board.
Okay, thank you. And Rob? In your view, what is the role of the Board of Ed member to the board? And then to the superintendent, to the students, the caregivers and the community? You really, it's a large role. How do you, how do you see that?
First of all, with regards to our relationship with the superintendent, that's the one person that the board has a direct role in hiring. I was part of the committee that interviewed superintendents this last go around. Where we ended up hiring Dr. Moore, which we were very happy about. He's an extremely talented individual. The board needs to maintain open avenues of communication with the superintendent and it's a two-way flow. And we also need to always, always ask questions of the superintendent. Why are we doing this? What is this about? Are we doing it in the right way? Are we getting the right information? As far as students go, we are in the process of developing a student representation on the board. And it's, it's being worked on right now where we have a few student leaders that are going to help us design and what this should look like. And so we will have a direct line to the students so that they can share with us what they see. In the hallways, in the classrooms, as to what's good and where are areas that need to be improved. As far as the community is concerned, I echo Scott's plea to have people come to the meetings and share their ideas with us. We, as the board, are listeners. When people come to the board meetings and come to the lecture. And share their ideas with us, we listen. We may not agree with what everyone is saying, but we take it into account. And when we go back into committee meetings, we take into account what has been presented to us from the public. So again, we need to listen to the public and we need to take their input into account as we make decisions moving forward.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now I'm going to start with Scott. And we will. So we've talked a little bit about diversity, equity and inclusion. So if we define a positive school culture as one that starts with strong and overlapping interactions among all the members of the school community. What organizational culture would you like to see fostered at Hunterdon Central? And how would you do it? That's easy.
Yeah, I mean, you know, as far as, we've already started that process of, of building. You know, we have a care policy, which basically means, you know, central advocates, respect and equity. And that helped us to create. There were, there were some clubs that were created out of that. In order to help people understand that there are, that there are different cultures and different people in this world. You know, to me, we, we need to get, get students involved in the conversation when it comes to this. And learn how to. Build that culture to where, to work together and to celebrate everyone. Because everyone is, is an individual and everyone deserves to be. To be celebrated, to, to have the, the opportunities to not have the barriers or obstacles in their path. To get to where they want to go, you know, to, to, to get rid of those, those. Those obstacles just so that going forward, you know, people can. Every student needs to be felt like they are heard and that's so important. They also need to feel safe and respected. And anything we can do, and we work with that on, on the board, just trying to move that forward in that particular case.
Thank you. Okay, and moving on to Ariel. You're like Monty Hall. Let's make a deal, right? As I, you wait for the. So staying in the same category of diversity, equity and inclusion, we know that food. So staying in the same category of diversity, equity and inclusion, we know that food and shelter insecurity, depression, anxiety and suicidal thoughts have increased post pandemic. What areas of improvement would you like to see the district make in addressing mental health needs or educational disparity among marginalized groups and the overall gaps in learning? And how would you fund it?
Okay, well, obviously funding is always an issue, no matter what profession you're at. But there's always a solution to every problem. I am a firm believer in that. Some solutions take longer than others to solve a certain particular problem, maybe because it's due to its complexities. Or whatever the case may be, or those that are trying to solve the problem get frustrated and just decide to move on. There's federal, there's federal grants out there, state grants. I'm not sure exactly. I'm not as privileged as Rob and Scott to be Board of Education current members. So I don't know how that actually works with applying and attaining federal grants and state grants. But that's free money that can be utilized to address these issues. One of the main issues that I know that's occurring and has occurred due to the COVID stressors, if you will, that have occurred over the past few years is a lot of mental illness with our youth. That on the top and compelled on top with the issues with diversity and lack thereof, if you will, has, has created this kind of habit. So how I would fund it, that would be one avenue that I would look at, which would be grants to see if we could apply or attain those grants. And another avenue is, you know, going back to the basics and opening up the budget completely and looking at every single item, itemized list of every single item that we have on there and what we're spending on it and why we're spending it and how come we're spending it? And is, is it possible to get it a tad bit cheaper and to reallocate that money to address some of these issues and get new programs in both training and some type of education for both the teachers and the students to address these issues? I mean, there's I love problems because problem solving is a phenomenal thing to do. And I just think it takes time and dedicated people. And like Rob and Scott said, they, they, they started a lot of the groundwork for a lot of different issues and they're dedicated and that's, that's the way I would go about it.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm going to start this next question with Rob. And we're going to talk about curriculum. So what is the role of the Board of Education in selecting materials? Including current and existing books and reference materials, both within the classroom syllabus that we already have, as well as books and materials available to students in the life, within the library. And sort of a, just to get to the heart of the, the issue, do you support the concept of banning books that include characters from or issues concerning the LGBTQIA plus community? That's a mouthful.
Yep. The Board of Education's role is pretty, pretty well set in that all learning materials for curriculum come through the Board Student Life and Program Committee, where I'm the chair. We trust our highly trained professionals, both in administration and teaching corps and at our at our, in our library, to choose materials based on their expertise. Every year, the board summarily reviews and approves textbooks that are already there. Textbooks are changing. There's a lot more available online and I'm a big, big fan of the developing of custom textbooks or text materials through something like a wiki text that teachers can develop with their students to make reference material available to all students electronically. As far as banning books is concerned, the books that we have, either as textbooks or in the library, are there because, as I've said before, are highly trained and very capable professionals have chosen these books to help our students discover who they are, discover knowledge, discover concepts. And I trust them to do what's right for the students in our, in our, in our schools. Notably, at one of the most recent board meetings back in April, I think it was, we had students come to the meeting and one young man made a very big impression on me, came to the lectern and said, to all of people who think we should be banning books, do all of you understand that we have one of these? And he held up a phone. Kids have 24/7 access to everything on the planet. So banning books is kind of silly because they're going to have access to it regardless. Again, I trust our professional staff to make the right choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and Ariel, well, I'll ask you about also a curriculum question. Do you believe the current program of studies offered at Hunter and Central addresses the interest need and, and needs of all the students? And what areas would you improve? And yeah, that's it. I'm sorry.
Okay, no worries. Well, let me start by saying that I am not very well versed in the curriculum. I'm not. What I do know is that there has been a big push for banning books from the library, I believe, or from the classrooms. And ironically enough, I had a conversation with my mother yesterday, or actually two days ago, because she was asking me how the event went at the Board of Education meeting on the 19th. And I was explaining it to her and I told her that one of the subject matters that been discussed with me is the banning of books from libraries and or in the classroom. And my mom, obviously growing up in a socialist communist country, Cuba, for predominantly her entire childhood, young adulthood and adult life, gave me the, the, the best line I have, I have heard in a while, in a long time. She says, take away the books and you take away their education and their possibilities to expand their mind. She said it in Spanish, so it sounded a lot better. But let me say that there should be no, the curriculum should obviously be approved by the Board of Education in conjunction with the teachers, because the teacher's input is vital, I believe, because they're the ones mentoring, they're the ones overseeing our children. And again, I reiterate the fact that our children is the goal. They are the number one priority in every decision the Board of Education should make and every decision the superintendent should make. And ourselves as parents, we try to do the best we can, but we, we hand over our kids to the teachers and to the school district every day. So I am in complete, completely against banning of any books at any level. I believe that the books should coincide with the age level of the, of the child or the student reading and learning from the book. So they could properly understand it, properly grasp what's being taught in the book and what's being told in the book. I love reading and I would, and unless we're going to turn our community, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Finish your thought.
I just wanted to say unless we're going to turn our community into socialist communist Cuba, I suggest that we really reevaluate our priorities and let our children mind blossom the way God intended. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. And Scott, I will go back to the question and get your input on, again, same, same, similar concept. You could talk about any part of the curriculum, concerns that you've seen from the community about what's in the curriculum and what's being taught and speak to that and, and how you feel our program of studies is as well. And is there any areas of improvement that you could, you could see?
Um, you know, originally I was kind of happy that Rob got that question on curriculum. It's kind of his wheelhouse, you know, like that's, that's right there. It's spread back. Like I'm more of a, I'm more of an operations guy, maintenance, you know, construction projects. Twenty-two years as a project manager for a commercial contractor. But I know that we are, we're constantly expanding programs. We're constantly looking to work with area colleges in order to help our children get some college credits for work that they're doing in the school. I, I know that there have been people who have complained sometimes about certain things that we're teaching. I just, you know, to me, these are high school kids. They're 14 to 18 years old. You know, they're, they're at that part of their, their development and in their lives where, you know, none of this stuff should come as difficult for them to try to understand or learn. You know, again, it may go back to a culture within the family that they deal with and maybe they go home and they make a complaint about something, something that they're learning. You know, people come in and they start talking about critical race theory. We're not teaching critical race theory. We're just not. If you're a high school age child is learning critical race theory, you should be very, very proud of that, that child. Because that means your child is taking an advanced college course. It's just you just not being taught in high school. So.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Okay, and we're going to move on to I think I'm back up to the top. There we go. So Ariel, I'll start with you on this next question. And we're going to move into everyone's favorite topic, which is fiscal responsibility. School taxes make up the largest amount of our taxes. Do you have any proposals for trimming the school budget? What are your ideas with that?
Well, let me, okay, so trimming the school budget. I would really have to sit down with my colleagues if I was blessed enough to win a seat come November and look at the school budget. I have not seen the school budget. I'm not familiar with the school budget. So I would be remiss to even opinionate on the school budget as it stands today. I understand from being a property owner here in our district that a big chunk of my taxes goes to the school district and the school budget, if you will. So that's where I would start. I would start with that. And obviously, you know, I took a lot of business management courses when I was attaining my master's from Seton Hall and being the treasurer for the NAACP chapter and stuff like that. I deal, I'm very good when it comes to money and making one penny, you know, stretching it to five pennies, if you will. So I'm pretty good in that aspect. And I would really love to look at the school budget and see where we're at with all our expenditures, all our overhead costs, what it is that we are spending our money on to the penny. And then seeing how we can make it better, how we can make it work better for us, how we can expand it, how we can take some money from one section to another and create programs that we may not have, that we may need. And I believe that there's some programs that we definitely need to institute in our school system, just for the students themselves. So that's how I would approach that problem. But honestly, I would be remiss to even give a valid or honest opinion on the school budget, because I have never seen the school budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Scott, I will ask you about staff recruitment. Mix it up a bit. I should change the heading on that. This is for Hunter and Central as well, though. What concerns do you have for retaining and recruiting quality staff as we are facing a nationwide teacher shortage?
Sure you don't want to go back to that fiscal thing? Because I'm, I'm the chair of the Operations and Transportation Committee, so I know the answer.
You want to throw this question to, I was gonna say, you want to throw this to Rob and then you can answer the fiscal one?
I'll throw that to Rob and I'll come back to that other one.
Okay.
Rob's good.
Go ahead, Rob.
My concern is that we need to stay competitive with all the other districts out there. We have an advantage in that Hunter and Central has an excellent reputation. You need to start your timer, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Has an excellent reputation. I happen to help train teachers at the College of New Jersey, science teachers. Three of my previous students are now teaching at the high school, which I am very proud of. And it turns out that when candidates leave our teacher training program and look for jobs, sometimes the reputation of the district is more important than the initial salary. Certainly helps to have a comprehensive salary that's competitive. And fortunately, Hunter and Central, we just settled a five-year contract that makes us very, very competitive in recruiting talent from everywhere. But in addition to that, if you have a district where teachers feel that they are valued, that their contributions to the district are part of a larger picture of excellence, they will come. Turns out that the shortage isn't as critical in New Jersey as it is in, let's say, Florida, because New Jersey has very good schools and fairly decent pay scales as well. The shortage happens to be primarily, at least in the secondary level, in special ed, math, world language and science. In order for us to recruit these, recruit the talent and keep the talent, the best way moving forward is to make sure that Hunter and Central remains a wonderful place for teachers to work and to share their expertise. And right now, that's the case, and I hope to maintain that moving forward as well.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, I'm back to you, Scott. So, so what, what can we do? What can you do with trimming the school budget to support a lot of the initiatives that, that you all have talked about?
Well, right now, the Hunter and Central Fiscal House is in amazing shape. We have the BA we have there now, Mrs. Spitzer and the previous one, Jim and Corp, Corp, she, they're just so good at what they do. We, last year, we were able to pay off our debt services. So we had a referendum that was running. We were able to, to pay that off. We have a capital reserve right now that is so strong and it's able, we are able to handle four or five million dollars a year worth of construction projects or any type of, of infrastructure improvements that we need, using it towards 21st century science classrooms, all the way down to repaving parking lots. We have a long range facilities plan that sets goals for all of these things. If it's, in order for us to discuss a construction project, it has to be on that, that long range facilities plan. And it doesn't necessarily mean that if it's on for next year, we're going to do it. But it just means that we can have the discussion about it. We do not need to go out for referendum anytime soon just because of the, the condition that our budget is in right now. It, you know, if anything should come up, we had issues with, with Ida that came through and flooded all these areas. And we had the money that we could do. We didn't have to try to scramble for money. We had the money. We can go through, fix the things we needed to fix and then put in for the insurance or put in for getting monies back either from insurance company or from the state or from the federal government. All of that, and this year, and I hope I don't get this wrong from Mrs. Spitzer, this year, we were actually able to, to give money back to taxpayers even with all of this happening. So we are, we are in, we are in phenomenal shape. And it's been that way for four years that I've been on, that I chaired Operations and Transportation. And I see it going forward, you know, several more years in the future without it having to.
Thank you very much. So our time has come to a close. We're slightly over time, but that is okay. We are going to move toward our closing statements and I will start with Scott, I believe. And we'll do Scott, Rob, and then close with Ariel. So anything that you didn't get an opportunity to share with us that you would like to now, as well as putting your information, if people have questions for you, how they can reach out, if you put that in the chat, we'll make sure that that gets put out. But go ahead, Scott, and give us your closing statement.
Okay, there are, there are three seats open in Raritan Township. And there are three people right here that, that we need to let people know that in order to, for our Board of Education to move forward in the positive way that it is, we need to vote for Rob, Ariel and Scott. We need to let people know that. There are, like I said, there are three people running for those same three seats that want to come in and change everything. They want to come in and send things back. We need to avoid that. They wanna come in and send things back. We need to avoid that. Um, I, I love, I love what I do on the Board of Education. I love um, just the, the information that you get, the insight, you know, all of that stuff that you get from being on the board. Um, you know, volunteering is always, like I said, volunteering has always been um, in my blood. Um, I would love to work, go ahead and move forward and work with the, the other not, seven people that are on there now and add number eight with uh, Mr. Almore there. Um, but we really need to, the, the, my biggest, you know, we're, we're, we're low on the ballot. We're not one, two, three or four. We are five, six and seven. We need to let people know that when they go out to vote, don't just vote for number one and not think about it and move on. They need to vote for three, they need to vote for the three correct ones, the three best ones for the board. And that's Scott, Ariel and Rob.
Thank you. Okay, and Rob?
I have lived most of my adult life in high schools. I'm a retired teacher. I taught high school science for twenty-one years at Hillsborough. I was the, a science supervisor for the Westminster Plains of our school district. And uh, after retiring from K-12 education, I have served as a professor of science education at the College of New Jersey. I no longer teach on campus, but I still work with student teachers in the field. As far as what we know about this district moving forward is that we're in a very, very good place. Uh, we have an excellent Board of Education that works well together right now. We have a talented uh, administration and teaching staff that are on the right path. The kids are, are in the hands of highly trained, highly qualified uh, professionals. And I'd like to have the opportunity to sustain that culture moving forward. Um, I echo what Scott said about making sure that we communicate with everyone with regards to where the three of us are placed, placed on the ballot so that people know uh, where to look in order to place their votes. I have enjoyed being on this board for six years. I don't have any kids in the school. I do this because, like I said, I have a passion for education. And I still wanna make a difference in the lives of young people. And I really hope to continue this for another three years. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. And Ariel?
Hey, let me start off by saying thank you to Ms. Ward and the committee and everyone that's participated tonight. It's very humbling for me and thank you for allowing me to participate and be part of this dialogue and this uh, question answers that we've been doing here tonight. Um, I want to just illustrate that I come in as someone that is very passionate about being part of change, very passionate about providing a level of safety to our children that they deserve, a level of support that they deserve. And when I say our children, I mean every child. There's no exclusion to that statement of any type of child. Um, and as Rob said and as Scott said, they have been doing great work from what I've seen at the Board of Education meetings. I, like my live people, I believe that I can help. I believe that my training and experience, both my previous career, my current career, um, my educational background, my ferocity to be focused and diligent on everything that I do, and also my compassionate empathy to work with those that disagree and those that are on different sides of issues. And, and, and having a way of bringing people together, even though we disagree to collaboratively, to come to a solution and move a problem forward to the solution process of it. That's what I intend to do if I'm able to attain a position on the Board of Education. Please come out and vote in November. And vote for the three of us, because we, we rock.
Very good. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, uh, thank you to the audience for participating. Um, and thank you to all of the candidates. Um, we appreciate your time. Wish you luck on your um, on campaign. And um, look forward to uh, seeing how, how things go. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye-bye.